Nine o'clock, welcome to the May 22nd County Council Meeting. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag and all allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great model for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has the agenda been posted properly?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll take an aye vote to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Roll call, please. Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Mr. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Present.
Mr. Madgett.
Your present.
Mr. Piper.
Here.
Quayden Bush.
Here.
Thank you. Now we'll need a motion to approve the amendments for April 24th meeting.
Sub move.
Second. Just a second, Larry. Roll call, please. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes.
We'll need right along to the financial agenda.
County General Commissioners has been withdrawn. Assessor reassessment, 312, Form 11 expense, $11,052. Total request, $11,052.
Will be approved.
Second.
Scott, second by Jessica.
Come on in. Mr. Michael. What this is, just annual paperwork that we have to send out to taxpayers whose assessments have changed, who is state mandated.
And you have so done so.
Yes, sir. And very early in the year.
Any questions?
This is going from the reassessment.
From the reassessment. Roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Quayden Bush.
Yes.
Was it motion by Scott and second by Jessica? Okay.
Right.
I don't think I got a vote call on that one, though.
You what?
I didn't get a vote call on that one. How about that stuff?
Alexander.
Yes. Happy now?
Yeah, I am happy.
Very happy.
Okay, now we know Mr. Richmond is normal now. Makes mistakes.
Transfer agenda.
Transfer agenda, please.
Do you want me to read all these?
I don't think so.
I do want to tell you, if you go down to line C-109, it says medic C-109, that should have a minus in front of it, because there's two positives there. That one's the minus one.
The C is minus.
Yes. Thank you, Gil caught that yesterday.
Okay.
So these are all transfers for emergency medical services. They're all new hires that are, we previously done, but we missed some, so this catches up all of his new hire transfers for the year so far.
You want to vote that not have a minus?
The C-147? That's a plus.
Oh, okay, the C is a plus.
Right. She don't put the pluses on just the minuses, but that one minus got minus.
Go ahead, add a minus on it.
So we need to make this minus a plus.
This is one minus got minus.
C-147 is ticked minus off, right?
It's a plus. C-147 is a plus.
Yeah.
If there's nothing beside it, it's a plus.
Motion to approve, please.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Jane, discussion of an anecdotal remark. Call for Mr. Rogers. He said, "Wrong." He said, "They tell me none of the auditors office are supposed to be turning these in." I said, "Well, I think that's right, but maybe we'll just let you catch up since you've been kind of under some turmoil." So this is kind of a catch-up on some of these, and some of them are, he's had some pretty good turnover. So that's why we have so many all in one bubble. Roll call, please. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes.
Community corrections, jail diversion coordinator, minus $13,096.50. Part-time, plus $5,929. Health insurance, plus $4,259.43. FICA, plus $2,908.7. Total request is zero.
Will be approved. Second. Scott, second by Larry. Mr. Goulet.
It's Castle, I'm the executive director of the correction. This is a bit premature. I'm not sure what to do with this. I really need the DOC's approval to do this. Don't have it yet. So I'd entertain suggesting.
Table it.
On what you want to do. When's the next meeting? Is it?
In June.
Hmm, 20 something. We'll have a calendar around me. Be a month. It'll be a month.
Yeah.
That soon enough before your.
I've got an amount of money next month I want to try to move.
What are you gonna, you want to put those together on next month, or?
You don't have to spend it.
Well, it has to do with before July 1st, I think, is fiscal year.
I did in June the 3rd.
Couldn't the motion just include approval with the approval of the DOC?
Yeah, I need the advisory board to be aware, and then I need the DOC's approval. So that's what I was hoping to get, was just approval pending.
Subject to.
I've been gone for about 10 days out of the office, and this kind of got the cart in front of the horse, so to speak. So I do want to make you aware of that, first of all, but.
You're still planning on doing it, subject to state approval?
Yes.
No matter what?
We were going to try to move this money, because this is Robin Ludick's salary.
Right.
He's been off on medical, and we've used part-time to cover it. However, it is, it is house built into six grant money, which they're usually kind of particular about, so I'm not sure what they would do. So they don't want to bind this up, but I am going to be coming back with another 13,000 next month, trying to get it before we.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you wanted to handle it today.
Why don't we, why don't we make the motion subject to the advisory board and DOC approval, and then approve it, if that's okay with everybody?
Is that okay, Larry?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Sounds good. I think what I'll do, Scott, is I'll reach out to Dr. Brown and have him pursue getting approval before our next meeting.
Okay.
So we can get it wrapped up in less than a week or so.
Okay.
You okay with that?
That part's on you.
And then when you get that approval, you'll have to notify Gil, because she won't transfer this until somebody tells her it's been approved.
Yeah, well, I guess we could also email the council members, just so as well. Be glad to do that. Just wasn't quite sure.
Don't forget, how much you get the approval check, if you're in the body of the office?
Yeah, I'll get it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes.
We have an amendment.
Addendum transfer. This should say it's for EMS. Didn't see that. So this is EMS 397 billing services, minus $35,000. 441 ambulance, plus $35,000. Total request is zero.
Will be approved.
Second.
Scott, second by Jessica. Mr. Jason Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, emergency medical, emergency management director. This is, we have a unique opportunity with our ambulance manufacturer. They've taken something in on trade that still has service life left, so it is the same version of our vehicle, and we have an opportunity to buy it for what they took trade in on. So it was, it basically does, is just going to go through their hands, and they don't have to do anything with it. If they put it on their lot, it's going to double in price, so when they called, I said we probably better jump on this. So we're going to save probably the purchase of a new truck, which is $150,000, for at least probably another year before, because this will help us out with our fleet. So it's a, it's a bit of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something like this and have a manufacturer actually work with us like this. They actually called us, so they're keenly aware of the situation that we're in, and thought that they could help us by offering, offering that, that trade-in value that they took in.
Might explain about the box, too.
Well, it's the, it's the exact same model of ambulance box that we use. The truck itself can be re-chassis, so this, this particular truck, we have, the truck we're taking out of service and decommissioning, the ambulance box was built in 1989. So we get a lot of life out of those particular boxes. This one is on its first chassis, so we anticipate getting 20 or 30 years out of this particular box, and it's built to the same spec and standard. It's a little bit larger ambulance than the one that we purchased. We purchased the signature series, this is the Chief XL. It's on a 450 chassis, so it's really, it's really a good purchase for us. If we were just purchasing the box itself, it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of $75,000 or $80,000. It does sit a little bit higher, yes.
So, fellow, what else it's equipped with?
Oh, yeah, so we talked about this with our, in our, with our last purchase on those electric cots, but this, this particular box actually has the auto-loading system in it, which is a new standard that they're implementing. Indiana's the last state to make it mandatory, or to have yet made it mandatory, but we believe it is coming, and that's a $40,000 price increase in every new purchased ambulance. This box actually already has that in it, and it's worth that load, so.
And Jason worked with us and with the auditors office to transfer this money, and then next month, we'll have to have an appropriation from the equipment fund to replace this money back. This is a quick way to get this achieved. Any questions? Roll call. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now for the famous motion, please.
All right, let's see. Motion to approve financial transfers and amendment salary ordinance with like reductions. Any changes? Okay, that's it.
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes.
Emily, it's good to see you, and not at the podium.
It's very rare.
We as county council, I'm sure all my fellow members would be in unison with me on this, thank you all for working diligently this year, including Emily's not even up this week. It makes us feel like you're honoring our position as the people that have to manage the funds, and we can't manage them without each department managing theirs. We appreciate that. The shorter these agendas are, the better you are doing your job.
Thank you.
Not us doing it, it's the department heads and elected officials that are staying within their budget. Okay, where are we going next? Tax abatement. I have a little thing on tax abatement, Mr. Hughes, that you might take a look at. The town of Yorktown is looking at a company coming into Yorktown into the old Marsh warehouse, and they're talking about offering tax abatement. My question is, do small towns and other units of government have capability to give tax abatement that affects the tax rate of all entities?
I don't know that today.
They have to do their redevelopment, because they don't have a, they have their own redevelopment. I don't know that. I don't know that, I just.
Yes.
Yeah.
They do?
Yes.
And so they would have that power?
I believe so.
Okay.
Can they do that outside of their township, though?
Well, that's my question.
It was just my understanding that you can, you can abate, the tax district can abate, but they can't abate for all the rest of us, that their abatement would only be from Yorktown, would not include the school, the county, nothing, that's the way I understand.
Well, that's my question, and I don't know the answer to this one. It hasn't happened, but I, it's just a new twist that came to my attention. Okay. Thank you. Appointments.
I've got a couple to throw out for civic center authority.
To offer? We'll say not throw out, offer.
What's that? We'd like to point.
Can't we say offer and not throw out?
There we go, yeah. Offer Donna Patterson and Mary Ann Cradaville for appointments, I believe those start in July.
They end in, end of July. Be all of it.
Okay. Well, I, the reason I'm supporting doing this in advance is because I and another two or three individuals got thrown in as appointments at the same time by the commissioners, appointed by the commissioners. We immediately walked into a meeting where we had to approve or deny a budget that we hadn't seen. So I want to have time to get these appointments up to speed and able to understand what's ahead of them, so they're prepared for that first meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Jessica, questions?
Okay, and who was the second one?
Mary Ann Cradaville. I've got the information for you, your name, address, phone number.
Okay, you can send that to me.
And no questions, call for a roll. Call for it. Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes.
And I want to compliment Scott, he was appointed to that board by the county commissioners, and due to the fact that I've served on that for about 10 years, he has talked with me and asked for advice and such during his time, and he's really working on that, so I can understand your concern, because that board is almost a rubber stamp board, and they're in a position now where they're having some effect on this, so I really appreciate what he's doing. Look forward to Donna being there and supporting, and Mary Ann Cradaville is a former city controller, got a lot of experience in accounting, and it should be a good team.
It'll be a very, very qualified board.
Yeah, I agree. We will have Warren Beatty in there for the cookies every month.
Was he as a partner?
No, he's a mayor appointee. He may still be there.
We don't know that.
He'll still be there getting the cookies, I guess.
Oh, getting the cookies.
Yeah, that's what he likes, is his refreshments. He always makes that comment, so.
I'm not saying anything out of school.
And we have an open appointment on the housing authority to finish this year, and Jessica's been doing some work on that for us, and I think she has an appointment.
I do. So I'll just read a little bit of, I have my friend Kira, I've known her for many, many years. I'll send a little bio, so everyone can get to know her. Sorry. All right, so Kira Childers is a resident of Yorktown and has worked at Ontario Systems for 15 years in 2018. At Ontario Systems, Kira has held a variety of roles. For the past eight years, she has been a member of the People Services Team, handling projects such as talent management, employee engagement, and administrating the company's learning management system. Kira is currently the board president at the Muncie Children's Museum Board, and also volunteers her time to the Facing Project, a local nonprofit focused on creating community and raising awareness through storytelling. Ever since Kira had two summer internships at the DeKalb County Housing Authority in DeKalb, Illinois, she's been very interested in the availability of safe and affordable housing for all individuals. Her experience working in both the public housing and Section 8 voucher programs at D-Safe HA helped to shape her as a young adult, and has informed her, her interest in community involvement in the years since. So I think she'd be a great, a great fit for this role, since she does have some of that background and experience.
And motion by Jessica, who's second, please.
Second.
Jane, any questions? Jessica pointed out to me that, because I always ask that the person be here, but a little bit of a short notice here, she's been corresponding back and forth for a couple, three weeks with this lady, but she just couldn't be here because of her employment, but she will be able to make the meetings, which one will be this third day. So I have a motion with Jessica, second. Jane, any questions?
What was her last name again?
Childers, C-H-I-O-D-E-R-S. Can I email you her contact information?
Roll call, please. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes. Little side comment, I saw Jessica sitting there using her old computer thing on her phone and reading that off. I was at the CBS store yesterday, there a lady, Peter Bell, with her telephone.
Ron. Can't do that.
I'm telling you what.
People do that, Ron.
It took about like five minutes, but gee whiz. Guy asks, "Do you need a receipt?" "No, I got it right here." No wonder people hack into these people's computers.
Ron, they got this thing called Amazon, you ought to check.
Anything you want, deliver to your door.
I can't.
Hey, I'm doing email pretty good.
I can't wait till Ron learns that you can be positive, check by taking a picture.
Not me. I want a receipt in my hand.
Okay, personnel, Mr. Fangler. Nothing?
I'm good.
Read the latest insurance report here recently. Not sure I popped it up, but we're in the black, right? Pretty good. Pretty much where we started out at the beginning of the year, as far as the working balance. Okay? Great. Okay, now we're going to talk about ordinances. We have an ordinance to amend that ordinance of 2007-020 that was amended in 2011-039A, and we're going to amend that today, and I'm sure you all have that in your hands. It's something that we discussed at our last meeting. It has come to light that, as we pointed out before, that longevity was a negotiated item in some contracts, labor contracts, and when we passed the ordinance, actually putting longevity to bed, we didn't realize that, so the agreement that the commissioners have signed recently does put longevity to bed. It'd be over, subject to our approval of this ordinance, and subject to the agreement between the commissioners and the three labor organizations. And what this will do is it will allow anyone hired from December 13, 2011, to April 16, 2018, to be on the longevity plan, but after April 16, 2018, no one in any department or any jurisdiction will be on for longevity. Did I say that okay? Anybody want to make a motion to approve this ordinance?
Well, here's a, here's a question.
Well, we need to get a motion on it.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a question about it, but I think before we can make a motion, it says a second reading.
Where does it say that?
No, I was asking.
Oh, we were asking when this.
Did we do a first reading last month, or just discussed?
We did a discussion.
Just discussed.
This is discussed.
This is the first reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And you need a motion to discuss it.
Yeah. Move to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
By Larry, second and by.
Jessica.
Jessica. Now, we'll have questions.
The intention of this is to make this, this change not only for the bargaining unit, but for all of the employees in accounting.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, what number are we looking for here?
2039A. We can't, uh.
Well, it says 2018 at the top. Are we making a new ordinance or ending the old one?
Right.
020. 020.
020?
No, 2018 dash 005.
Right.
Yeah.
You're sorry.
005. Rather than what I think was.
You told me that earlier.
I didn't have my glass, but I know that was not.
You're keeping us on our toes this morning.
We have a motion to approve ordinance number 200. Approve for introduction, that's the way Larry said it.
20818, 005.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quayden Bush.
Yes. Normally, I am one who opposes suspending the bylaws and rules, but in this case, to be expeditious, I'm wondering if we would maybe want to do the second reading, suspend the law bylaws.
Well, we discussed it last week, I mean, it's, what, last month?
Well, it'll be another month, though, before.
That's what I mean, so I'll move for suspension of the ordinance 2018-005.
No, second.
Thank you. Anybody opposed to that? We're going to vote to suspend the rule. Roll call, please. Mr. Madgett.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.[1773.12] Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
I'll move for approval ordinance 2018 dash 005.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Magic.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to the Delworth County Police Retirement Plan. I'm wondering if maybe we don't want to change our procedure here and do our question and answer before we hear a motion. Is that okay with everybody? Or is someone prepared to make a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Number, please.
2018 dash 018.
Discussion. Mr. Holden, Captain Holden, or Mr. Hapton Holden, I forgot to get that right. Sorry.
I appreciate you taking the time to, to talk, and I know you offered to talk with everybody, I'm not sure how many you talked with. I know I talked with you. We, we got basically ourselves back up to speed on this from when, I think Larry introduced this a while back and, and, um, you know, I don't know that anybody's a hundred percent comfortable with where this thing is going to go, but we've got a great understanding of it and we, and we know how to measure it.
And that was the purpose of getting with a council member individually, the ones that I could reach, was that it is kind of confusing, I guess. It's easier to communicate one-on-one if you had any questions rather than sometimes it's harder to convey information in an open meeting. For anyone that has any questions, though, if I have a question, I can agree.
And I think we kind of arrived in.
I mean, anybody want to say what the drop program? I don't know what we're even talking about. What the resolution for?
This is for.
On the drop program?
Yeah, for the drop programs. It adds, it draws actually to the, in the bargaining agreement that was, was recently agreed to.
Part of the bargaining agreement was negotiated, but, yeah, we're just taking it.
Well, I think we maybe both reached a consensus that if, if we find out that this is hurting the program, anyway, we're going to figure out a way to do away with it.
That is a good point, there, there still is the sunset clause added into this amendment. Uh, and that runs through the end of the contract and it kind of coincides the same. Contract is good for three years and if this amendment is approved, it also is good for three years. It's actually three, it would be three years for the dance approved, so it may run just slightly longer. And, and the drop's been around for a long time. It's probably been in place twenty years for the, the police, the state police fund, the municipal police fund, the Potter retirement pension. It's been, sometime after that, about half the county police pensions in the state are participating in it. So if it was a bad thing, I'm sure we would already know about it and they would be canceling it and other pensions if it was something that wasn't good, so. One of the ways, I, I know I told you, the easiest way to wrap your mind around the drop is, because I know President Quicken Bush, one of the issues he had was the lump sum money you get at the end, and I think you brought it up too, as far as that might come from. It's, it's that deputy's money, it's, it's his. The easiest way to wrap your mind around the drop is if, think about a deputy who is eligible for retirement. He's met his age requirement and met his years of service, which is a minimum of twenty years. Uh, he's eligible to retire that day. He could turn in his papers, start drawing his pension that next month. And whatever that amount is that he's owed, that's what, when you enter the drop, that amount, your, your pension's frozen that day. You don't gain anymore. Uh, you're, for all intents and purposes, you retired that day when you entered the drop. The only difference is you get to continue to work for a specified amount of time. And whatever you would have already drawn on your pension is just set aside for you every month. Every month you work, another payment, another month, another payment. And once you exit drop, which there's a, there's a maximum amount of three years, could be as little as a month if you wanted to be, but it, but there is a cap of three years on it. So when they do exit, however many months they were in that, and whatever month, whatever they were owed anyway, it's just given to them in a lump sum. So it's no different whether they retired, drew it on a monthly basis, or whether they entered drop, continued to work, and then received the lump sum payment. So that's, that's basically what the drop is, in a nutshell.
And you've assured me that that money still stays invested.
It is, and.
It's not just set aside in a separate escrow for them?
It's not, it's still in the same, it's just designated that it's owed to them. It's still in the lump sum plan and, and one of the things we did as a department, there is an option for that money that's set aside for you to draw three percent interest. But we chose as a department to forego that and not allow that to accumulate interest, let it stay in the, the plan and let the plan accumulate that interest, not the deputy.
So that's, that I think is true.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think one thing too I liked about what they presented to us too is, is the fact that if a, you know, a deputy were to enter the drop and he's two or three years out, it gives the administration time to move experienced people around or if you're losing a well-reversed experienced person in particular position, you have the ability to have a little bit of.
Yes, it does, it, uh, w- once you enter the drop, there are no, there are no cancellations. You, once you sign on the dotted line that you're leaving on this day, you cannot stay past that date. You can leave earlier if you choose, but when that day hits, you have to go, there's no cancel. And it lets the department know that, you know, that you can plan ahead when you're leaving.
That's a benefit.
Yeah, that, that just works out better. And the other benefit to that is it does get the older deputies off the, uh, off the plan and it replaces them with the new deputies who are under the new provisions of the plan, which, uh, most of you know, the plan was changed in 2010 to, uh, scale back some of the benefits. You know, the maximum years and the age and, uh, whatnot was, was increased, so.
Any other questions?
When an officer enters the, the drop program, can he stay on the kind of benefits?
Yes, he, he still continues to work as a, as a county employee. The only thing that really changes is his pension. I know President Quicken Bush has asked, does he still pay into the pension? And that answer is no, because for all intents and purposes, as the pension is concerned, he did retire that day, so he doesn't pay in anymore. He's not gaining anymore, his benefits are frozen. He doesn't gain the two percent of the year and hang longer, he's frozen that day. So, so the answer is for pension purposes, no, he does not pay in, but all other county services does, does continue. Uh, one time you, uh, Councilman, uh, Spangler, or, uh, Alexander, I'm sorry.
Right here.
I'm thinking of one thing. Uh, one, one thing you brought up before was, uh, what happens if, if a deputy enters the drop and becomes disabled? I know that was a question you had before.
Yeah, something happens, yeah, something happens where it'd be health related.
Yes, and, and I found the answer to that out. Uh, it says, it says if they didn't enter the drop, they would just, uh, continue, they would retire or whatever, get disability from that point on, just as they continued as a regular deputy. So it just kind of canc, that cancels the drop.
So there's a way out, but it's not a very good one.
He's still leaving the department, but he does not benefit from the drop. Same thing with death, the death is the same way. If you enter the drop, um, and the deputy wants to die, it would be the same thing. The drop will be canceled and it would just be the same as if he didn't enter the drop.
We talked over several different scenarios the other morning.
When, when you said, Chris asked you about, uh, you, well, you said that the employee, once they enter, they no longer pay into the pension?
That's correct.
Does that also include the county no longer paying to that person? Just the employee?
Well, the, on a weekly or paycheck-by-paycheck basis, the county doesn't pay into the pension. It's just, uh, there's a yearly amount set on the actuary.
And we pay that quarterly.
Yeah, that's separate, that's just what the plan means. This, from all, from everything that I've been explaining from the actuary, the drop does not affect. Doesn't affect what's owed, it doesn't cost it more, it doesn't cost it less, it's, it's neutral.
Well, I think that is, that the minimum amount that they require us to pay is based on a net, the actuarial numbers that you already could retire, so it wouldn't affect.
Right, and the reason why that is done is because the day that a deputy becomes of age and has his years of service, the pension already calculates what's owed him for his life. You know, the IRS sets our mortality rates and so from that day, what he's earned, when I told you that amount was owed at his per month, they'll calculate at his age now to whatever they assume we're going to die at, total that up for that lifetime and that, the plan owes that on that day, that very day, it's owed. So that, that's again, that's the reason why the drop doesn't cost anything, you know, that money is already owed to that deputy at that day.
Well, that was one of the main reasons we discussed and sort of negotiated the three-year plan was if it does affect the pension plan, at the end of three years, we should at least have an indication.
Right.
And then the council at that time can review and, and, uh, talk about the benefits.
Right, and as far as the, as far as workers' work, we don't have a problem with that. Because I, I mean, I think once it's in place and once it's been in place for a few years, that it's kind of not the scary monster that everyone thinks it might be and we'll have this three-year period of monitoring, see? And then at that point in time, I'm sure we'll, we'll continue it. But if it's not for some reason, then, yeah, well, we'd be the first one to come to you and tell you that, you know, this ain't working out, let's, let's change it. I mean, this is our livelihood we're dealing with, so we don't want to do anything to hurt it.
Well, that was part of where some of my feelings were coming from, was from those that are already retired, that were scared of it, and I couldn't answer their questions. So I want to compliment you on being due diligent. You, you have, as an individual, approached this in a, a manner that we could discuss it without being at each other. I'll put it that way.
I appreciate that, and I, and I think I brought up to Councilman Alexander there. I'm, I won't even benefit from this for the three years. I, I actually won't be eligible to retire the first three and a half years.
Did you know?
Yeah, so it means it's not benefit me. I think it is a good plan, it's a good program and, uh.
I didn't know that. Do you have something to say?
I did. I, I included in the resolution the language that the plan was, that the amendment was designed to be actuarially neutral and will not impact the funding requirement of plan. And that came from an email from Stan Brown of One America, the, the Actuarial Consultant, and that was his language, that it would not impact the refunding requirement.
Now, the other thing, uh, I just, I just recalled here, the other thing we added into this amendment, I, and I believe it's the council's contention back in 2010, and some of the ones that were there in 2010, maybe I'll answer this. Uh, when those changes were made in 2010 to increase the age and also increase the vesting years from eight to ten, the intention of that, that was to exclude an outside, uh, non-deputy being elected sheriff and drawing a pension, coming in, serving eight years and then drawing a pension. Because at the time, with the old plan parameters, that would be the case. So the age was increased to age fifty-five and then ten years of service. But Stan Brown brought it to our attention last year when we were talking about this, that the way the current language was in the plan, a sheriff could still, certain, if certain conditions, uh, were met, an outside sheriff could still draw a pension. And the reason, and how that would happen was, say a sheriff was elected at fifty years old, and this, again, this is one that's not from the department. Say he was elected at fifty years old, um, came in, he served his eight years, well, he was now fifty-eight because one of those parameters was met, is age fifty-five, he could still draw unlimited pension at eight years because the language was not both, not age fifty-five and ten years. It was or, one or the other, ten years or fifty-five. So, uh, one of the things we've done in this amendment was correct that language. It's also added in there to change the language from or to and. So that way, you would have to be age fifty-five and ten years. That would exclude an outside sheriff from coming in and drawing a pension on this plan.
Anyone else? Roll call, please. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Magic.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Before you leave the podium, do you, would, do you want to tell the council your thoughts on sheriff's pension plan? Or do you want to keep that to yourself?
I'll, I'll let the sheriff negotiate those.
No, no, I'm talking about the lottery.
Oh, the lottery, oh, okay, yes, that, that was actually, uh, sometime last year, there was a news article online that, uh, I seen where some of the lottery money goes to, and then they posted online there that thirty million dollars of the lottery money goes to the police and fire pension and another thirty million goes to the teacher's pension. So, you know, we're not the only county in this state that struggles with, with the county pension. So my thoughts were, why does not any of the lottery money go to any of the counties? You know, maybe not thirty million dollars, because we're smaller than police and fire, but some at least. So, um, that kind of got an idea in my head and I approached Sheriff Dudley with that because he's really involved with the Indiana Sheriff's Association and they have avenues to introduce legislation and they have contacts with legislators and, uh, so that process had begun and Sheriff Dudley thought that was a good idea. So we're, they already, the Sheriff's Association thought it was a good idea too, but they already had some, uh, things that they were working on in their pipeline. So hopefully, maybe this year or next year, they will bring that up and pitch that to some legislatures to kind of get that ball rolling to see if, um, they can create a, uh, you know, a law to allow some of the lottery money to be used to disperse. The idea is to, whatever amount that they can get from the lottery, then disperse that countywide, maybe by population or, or size of the department, something like that, so.
Well, personally, I've been lobbying the last two state representatives that we've had in this district to give us some relief or some different legislation to help us on the sheriff's pension plan locally, to no avail. I've done it in public meetings, I've done it privately. But I, I wanted you to say that if you didn't mind, because I think it behooves us as council members, and when we go to our meeting late June, bring this subject up so we can help your organization lobby that, for this relief. Because, you know, the sheriff patrols I-69 out here, we get nothing for that. Same as our ambulances and such. It's, it's time that we get some groove, a little oomph, other than just us in the video. We'll see, so we appreciate it. We'll work on it. Thank you, sir, thank you for your good work and I'm sure your fellow deputies, co-teams, they make you.
Wake up, Ron, it's time to get back to work. Audience comments. Anyone in the audience like to make a speech? From the audience, want to tell a story? Any council members?
Yeah, I've got a quick story.
I've got a question.
I do have a quick story. Um, I don't know, I talked to somebody who probably let you know that my mom and dad have a, on their property have a bald eagle's nest, um, over there and we live just across the river from where they were. And Monday morning, um, it just happened, my wife and I and, and both of the kids were standing there looking out the window and this bald eagle came in, we have a pond behind the house, came down and, and took a bluegill. And we know that was for back at the nest where there now are bald eagle babies. So that made me feel good pretty much all day long.
Okay, we, I do have a couple of comments here. Do I have something? Excuse me.
Well, you're not going to like what I got, but I want to talk about budgetarians.
Oh, budgetarians, okay.
I meant to email you all this week previous and I forgot.
I meant to email you all this week previous, and I forgot. But next month, I would like to know exactly when you're gonna do it, what day we're gonna start, so we, so I can start getting all the paperwork and everything ready. And hoping that you'll do it all in the month of September and not drag it out like we did last year.
Well, we didn't drag it out much last year. Yeah.
We improved.
Well, you improved a little bit. You improved a little, I'll give you credit.
We got through the hearings quickly.
This year, yeah. And then we had this long, long-
But you don't want a big last night.
Yeah, and I'm gonna sound like Ron, I know. But in the old days, we used to start the day after Labor Day and you approved it at the September normal meeting. And I'd like to see you get back to that. I mean, there's no reason to be dragging it out, going from the final day of budget hearings to a whole month later. That just gives opportunity for people to get to you and then you change your mind at the last minute. And I gotta change everything. But it'd just be nice to get it all done in September, get it over with. But anyway, I just want you to think about that so we can-
Does it still, the sooner we finish it, the more likely the state's gonna approve it sooner because we're in line?
Well, this year is the year that the state has to have it back to us by December thirty-first. They changed that last year. I think it went into effect this year. But, yeah, they moved up some dates which are, you know, I'm supposed to have assessed values to the state no later than August first. And we don't, then it kind of delays. But then that puts a damper on James because they want assessed values by August first, but yet they haven't changed some of the due dates that stuff's due to him. So it puts him in a tough situation too. But, yeah, we're supposed to have all budgets are supposed to be back by December thirty-first. It used to be February fifteenth, and they moved it up to January fifteenth. And now it's December thirty-first. The state has to have everything done. So the sooner we get done, then that puts us further up, you know, being one of the first ones through the state to work on. The longer we wait, we'll come in, we could be county number eight and something instead of county number twelve. So anyway, I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. I want you to be prepared to give me info next month.
Appreciate.
'Cause all budgets are-
Your due diligence keeps us on track.
All budgets are due to me by July first, so.
And in all fairness to past council presidents, we did have some extenuating circumstances during those periods, like a circuit breaker.
Yes, we did.
And the interest rate going from five and a half or six percent to point oh two percent, which cut our funds by roughly ten million dollars. So part of that was just decisions weren't easy to make.
Right.
Took off. And as I mentioned earlier, the state called county council meeting is June thirty. Has everybody gotten signed up that the plan on going? Okay? And I received something, I think we all did, from Fred Van Dork, Budget Division Director, on distributions of cash that go in and see that. Didn't you send an email to me and said we didn't?
We're not on the list. We're not on the list this year. It's a supplemental. We got it like, two or three years ago. We got part of it, but we're not on the list this year.
So it's still, the rest of the council members will know?
We're not on the list. Yeah, unfortunately.
No extras. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Jessica, second by.
Scott.
Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Thank you all for coming.